I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 13th Committee of the Hall. To order please, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, we know. Would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Edwards is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lethko.
Here.
Alderman Kahnman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMinniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Duh.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
All right. Do we have a motion for the approval of the April 29, 2014 Committee meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
We've got a move in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Treasurers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The corporate fund monthly cash report for the month of April, we had a beginning balance of $6,601,041. Receipts for the month of April totaled $6,594,549. Disbursements for the month totaled $7,637,865. So our ending cash balance in the corporate fund at the end of April totaled $5,557,725.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Office of Budget Management contract report. Do we have a...
Questions?
Do we have any questions? Any concerns? Do we have a motion for approval?
Move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Before we get into the ordinances, I'd like to bring up old business and bring into the discussion the NAPA contract.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask you a question.
Sure.
We have an attorney here that's representing somebody that has an ordinance that's tabled for committee, and all I'd like to do is remove that and put it on the agenda real quick, and then he can leave because we've got a meeting.
You want to do that? Sure, we can do that one.
Okay.
Which agenda number?
It's 2014-157. Remove it from committee and put it on the...
157.
2014-157.
Yep. Put it on consent agenda.
Madam Clerk, would you like to read that?
Yeah. Excuse me. 2014-157 is an ordinance granting the property located at 29 Forest Ridge a variance of Chapter 150 flood plain regulations to allow a boathouse to be 1 foot 8 inches below the flood protection level.
Move the consent.
I'm sorry.
We have a movement for consent in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Back to the discussion on the NAPA contract. Do we have any opinions out here? Joe, I know we talked in the back.
Well, I think what we need to do here is separate some things instead of just throwing it all into one basket. I think there's... We say NAPA like it's a bad thing. They're a good company. We need to separate that from a procedural issue, and I think that's at the heart of what we're talking about. I think that's what's caused some concern and some problems. I know it has for me. I think I caught it in an email from corporate counsel to Joe McMinniman that the NJPA or whatever may not have been included in a contract between Illinois and Minnesota. And I think for me, there were many questions brought forth about that, and we were all assured. In fact, I think if you go to your contract packet, it mentions that. I think Jay Wavering has a letter in that packet that states that's how it's done. And then we get corporate counsel that says, and you correct me if I'm wrong because I'm trying to take this through the step, that, yeah, it may have been that way, and there may have been a mistake made, but because we voted on it, that makes it legal and binding. Well, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I think that if you are given information, and that's the basis for our vote, or for my vote, that's why I'm voting the way I'm voting, is by information that I'm given. And if that information's flawed and not accurate, then my vote's not accurate. And I understand what happened. We signed the contract. Now we've got some legal issues. But it comes back to the procedural issue of how this was handled and how we arrived at NAPA to get to the point we're at. And I think it's very important that we back up and not say, and this is my reasoning, that because we voted on something, that makes it legal, or that we can change the rules anytime we want. Because what happens then, we don't have any rules, and we can do whatever we want. And I'll give an example. By our Roberts Rules Order, I can't really ask for a revisit of the vote we had. I can do it while the meeting's on. Once the meeting's over, I can't do that. But if we've got no rules, and I can get six people to go along with me, I can do it. Now, what happens if we don't have any rules, and we don't have anything that's going to guide us? It's going to end up like the Wild, Wild West up here, where as long as you can get six votes, you can do whatever you want because there are no rules. And I don't want us to go down that path. I think it's important that we have rules. We have purchasing rules. We abide by those purchasing rules, and those are the things and the way that we operate. Now, NAPA's a good company. They're probably the leader in the industry in doing this. They're over here. It's the procedural way that we got there that I think's in question, and how we got there. And I think it's a real problem for us. And I kind of commend the mayor for writing a letter saying, look, if you guys want to do this, we've signed the contract. It is a binding contract. We have to go through the way to get out of that contract and start over. And for me, I think if we want to keep an orderly fashion in the way that we do things, and we went from it was a binding contract, or it was a corporate, or a collective contract between Illinois and Minnesota, we've been to three different versions that have been given to us, and finally, corporate counsel said it was really just a mistake. It was an oversight. We spent, we voted $3.8 million on a mistake. I don't like that. We have rules that are in place, and we ought to abide by the rules, and I think we need to back up. And I just think it's a bad deal for all of us. It's a bad deal for NAPA. It's a bad deal for other vendors. It's a bad deal for this city council. But if we're going to live by the rules that we've all set forth and take those rules serious, we really don't have an option here. And I think that that's... And I understand corporate counsel's point that we did vote. That makes it legal and binding. But from here on, if we head down this path, every time the staff tells us something, you're going to have a tendency to not want to vote for it because you're going to say, are they telling us the truth just to get us to vote for something? And we don't need that. We need to be able to have trust in our staff that they are telling us exactly what is. And we spent a lot of debate on this contract, this parts contract, and that question was asked over and over and over, how did we get there? And we find out that that, in fact, may not be the way we got there, that there were some assumptions made. And we can't have a vote of the city council that spends the public's money to the tune of $3.8 million on an assumption and hope we get it right. We need to have the facts, and when we vote, we need to be voting on those facts that are given to us. So I do commend the mayor. I think that that was the right thing to do, to put the letter out and give us the option to do that, because to say that we can do whatever we want, and we can change the rules mid-screen, whatever we want, if that be the case, let me put this in context, too. If that's what we're going to live by, and this council votes on a police contract, or a fire contract, or an IBW contract, any contract out there, and the next council goes, we don't like that. We're going to change that because we can change that. I think it's a bad road to go down, that we can change rules and contracts anytime we want. There has to be some semblance, or we're going to end up in the Wild West show up here. So again, I think the mayor did the right thing. I think we need to have that opportunity to revisit that, and then everybody can step forward and vote the way that you think's important to vote. And I'll be voting for we need to have rules. And do I think that NAPA will probably come out on top? They probably will. That's irrelevant to me. It's the procedure to get there. And so I don't want that to be, well, you know, they're probably going to end up with it, or... Nothing's guaranteed. But I had people come into my shop that are in the parts business and say that they didn't get a chance, they didn't get an opportunity, and then to find out that this may not have been true the way we did it. So that's my comment, Chairman, and all.
Thank you. Alderman Kahnman.
Yeah, I think the problem is that under our city purchasing code for a purchase like this, we'd either have to go out to competitive bidding, or we could do it through the state joint purchasing act. So we were led to believe that this was under the alternative, the state joint purchasing act, and we find out that probably isn't the case. But then we were told that, well, since we're the city council, we can, we don't have, and we're, and we're the body that, or our predecessor was the one that actually enacted the local purchasing act that would require competitive bidding for something like this. The fact that we passed it meant it was legal because we basically are overruling the bidding provision. I think probably corporation counsel is legally correct, but I don't think, I think the problem that, at least that I have, and I think a lot of aldermen have, is that we were not told that by voting for this, we're making an exception to the bidding requirement in the purchasing act. So I think, you know, if we're going to do that, first of all, I don't think it's a good policy to make exceptions to the competitive bidding requirement. I think we should follow that. But if we are going to make an exception and pass, make some purchase as an exception to that and not go through competitive bidding, I think we need to state that explicitly in the ordinance, saying we are doing this as an exception to the bidding requirement so everybody knows upfront that's going on, and that didn't happen here. So that's basically the problem that I had with the procedure.
Thank you. Alderman Tylin.
For the public, can, Mr. Greenberg, could you please just explain what happened? A lot of people, the people who've talked to me about it have been confused. It's been, you know, what happened? What led to this? How did this mistake happen? And then I guess the other part of this is, is that for me, is that we still, I guess, how long will it take for us to get an answer back from the state rather than going on probably's and maybes and could it be or is it's? Can we find, when are we going to find out yes or no? And if the FOIA is not getting acted on, should we just, can your office call the Attorney General's office and get an answer?
Well, the, start with everything first, and let me double check, find out exactly what date the FOIA was issued. I believe it was last Thursday. Yes, it was sent Thursday morning.
Can they have seven?
By law, seven, actually, calendar days. They have five business days.
Okay.
So they should respond by Thursday, or else ask us for more time to, for that state to respond. So we should have an answer Thursday unless the state of Illinois asks for more time.
Okay.
Now, in terms of what happened, and I mentioned this on the radio yesterday morning, and I think all the staff members made the same mistake. If you go to the website for NJPA, and down at the bottom of, I believe, is the homepage, and I'll double check this as I'm looking, there is a section that talks about legal authority. And then you can click on that, and you can go to the individual states. And when you pull up Illinois, you have a webpage that talks, that basically refers to the intergovernmental cooperation or statute. Now, we looked at that, and we did not realize that, in fact, it did not state that there is an intergovernmental agreement between the state of Illinois and NJPA. It simply refers to the authority of the state of Illinois to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with NJPA. And for that matter, also, the state of, excuse me, the city of Bloomington would have that ability to enter into a direct arrangement with NJPA. But what we have right now, of course, as several aldermen have mentioned, is we have basically a couple of ways to go through contracts of this type. We have the closed sealed bidding procedure, and we have the ability to piggyback onto a contract that's been entered into after public bidding or RFP proposals by the state of Illinois or by the federal government. So that's why we were looking at the webpage, and we made the mistake that, in fact, it said this is the authority that the state of Illinois has to contract with NJPA, but it does not connect that final dot of saying, we, in fact, have a contract with the state of Illinois. That's where the staff made a mistake. And it was a simple mistake. We're not proud of it. You know, we don't like making mistakes, but that's the only mistake that was made. We're not trying to deliberately mislead the council or do anything like that. That's it in a nutshell. Now, after the fact, now that we've realized that there may not, in fact, be a contract between NJPA and the state of Illinois, we were, I had to look at the issue of, well, is this a legal contract, and was this legally entered into by the city of Springfield? And in fact, that's where we get into what I've mentioned before, is the last ordinance in time is what's controlling. So, and I'm not trying to advocate that it's a policy matter. This is something we should do in the future, but as a simple matter of law, the last ordinance in time controls, and by ordinance, we entered into the contract with NAPA. And NAPA has, on their part, executed the contract. We've executed the contract. We have the legal ability to enter into that contract, so therefore, we have a legal contract between the parties. And that's it in a nutshell. Staff made a mistake, but we did not try to deliberately mislead anybody.
Alderman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, perception is everything, and, you know, I sat here, and my no vote was based primarily on this whole thing. When you have a process, and we have a process, we have a bidding process in place, why would we give that up? All of this should have been researched before anything happened with NAPA. It should have been brought to us to say, we're going to be doing something a little different than what we normally do, just to even give us a heads up, because then maybe some of us would have asked, you know, is this what we should be doing? Or we would have been, have given the opportunity to ask questions. We were never given that opportunity. We should never, because we have a, and I've dealt with this before with Jay. When you don't follow your process, that's what gets you in trouble. Again, like I said the last time I was here, NAPA probably rides to the top. But if you allow all of those individuals who want an opportunity to bid, an opportunity, then you don't have, there's no question later on about, well, I'm going to sue the city of Springfield. And of course, anybody can sue. But we would be on, I think, firmer legal ground if we had just followed our own internal process in terms of this bidding with this NAPA contract. Again, perception is something, and I think we are perceived now as being flip-flopers. We're perceived as being incompetent, and that's not a good public perception in terms of the job that we've been charged to do. We've got to get to a point where we don't allow staff, and I'm not talking about corporate legal, our directors, to just decide that they're going to do something different than what they're charged to do. It's unfortunate, and I applaud the mayor for saying, you know, we need to relook at it, revisit it. And I'm glad that we are, and I hope that we will vote to stick with our process from this point moving forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Griffin.
I think I'm kind of confused. Before, when it came, we had the, we had the choice. We could either go through the public bidding process or piggyback on the state of Illinois agreement. Does that sound right, counsel?
Yes. And what we thought we were doing is piggybacking on the state of Illinois.
But we had the choice of which way we were going to go.
Correct.
Yes. But it sounds like tonight that everybody's outrage is, we didn't do the public bidding. But we knew we didn't do the public bidding weeks ago when seven people voted for this. So where was that outcry then?
That's not it at all, Tim.
I understand the process.
We were told we were piggybacking, and I sat over here and pushed.
Alderman. Alderman, I'm sorry. Please let Mr. Griffin.
Right, but no, I agree, and I agree. I agree that we did this wrong, and we need to revisit it, and we need to fix it and do it right. What I'm saying is, it seems like everybody's argument was, we went with this piggyback agreement versus the public bidding when we all knew public bidding was an option the first time, but no one cried out besides Gail that we're not bidding it. Now everybody's argument is, we didn't go through the public bidding. We did it the other way. We did it wrong, and it wasn't incorrect that we did it that way, and it was a misunderstanding. It wasn't, as far as I'm concerned, I agree, I believe you, it was a misunderstanding. It was a mistake by the staff. But it seems like everybody's point tonight is, we didn't do the public bidding, but we knew that when seven people voted for it. We knew we didn't do the public bidding.
No, you have three ways that you... Mr. Chair, if I may?
I'm going to let you interject here because, yeah, so that you can respond.
We have three ways that we can bid. Three ways under our process. One is, you can have a professional determination by the purchasing agent. That's one. Two is, we can do an RFP. Three is, we can do the piggyback through state contracts, right?
That sounds...
Well, we didn't do any of that. We didn't, that's the point. We didn't do any of that. That's why I'm bitching, is because we were told we were piggybacking. In fact, we weren't piggybacking. We didn't do anything.
But if we had that agreement, would you guys voted to do the piggyback?
That we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Right. But if so, would you, because we thought, we ran the impression that we were piggybacking.
Right.
And people voted based upon that assumption, but tonight's arguments have been, we didn't do the public bidding instead of the piggybacking.
That's not my argument.
What I'm saying is, that should have been, that should have been a discussion that evening, everybody that says we...
My argument's the procedure, Tim.
...should have done like Gail said at night, and that should have been their point.
That's not what I'm arguing. I'm saying, pick one of the three. Pick one of the three and do what we do. We didn't pick any of them, and my argument with corporate counsel is, well, you guys changed the bidding procedures. No, we didn't. I assumed we were doing it one of these three ways, and the way that was explained to us was we were doing the piggyback. And corporate counsel's argument is, no, you changed that. You overrode that. Gail's point is, if they were going to do that, they should have told us we were doing that, because all the information I have, Tim, says that we piggybacked.
I agree wholeheartedly, but everybody tonight said...
Well, that's my argument.
The complaint was, we didn't do the public bidding.
Pick one of the three, and I don't have a problem with it, but it's got to be one of those three, not just one you make up. And then come back to me and say, well, you guys chose to override it. Well, I didn't know we overridden it. I thought we did the piggyback.
Alderman Griffin, are you...
I think so. Like I say, it just seemed like we have a different argument tonight than the people making tonight than we made the first time.
I think they're different arguments.
I agree.
So I think it is. Alderman McMinniman.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that Mayor Houston's making the right move here by giving the council another chance at this, if we choose to go for another chance, and also giving all bidders out there another chance. I think that's the right approach, and if there's been mistakes along the way, then let's admit the mistakes and march on. But I don't think there's been a single mistake here. I think there's been a series of mistakes, and I think the council shares some of the responsibility for those mistakes. I generally think it's a mistake when we got an ordinance held in committee to spring it out of committee, when it's an important, high-dollar ordinance, to spring it out of committee at the last minute, because we don't give the public notice when we do that. I think it's a mistake to close off debate on a 6-4 vote when, and I think our city attorney now agrees that it, when all of us are here, including the mayor, it requires eight votes to shut off debate, to end debate. So I think that's a mistake that took place here. There was a mistake in the sense that we never fixed the language of the ordinance. We've been working together, we always fix the language of the ordinance, if there's a dollar amount incorrect in the ordinance, if there's a date incorrect, but in this, in the case this ordinance, it flat-out says that we are going to move forward with the NAPA contract because there's an exception to the competitive bidding process, which is the joint purchasing approach. And that language is still in the ordinance. That's a huge mistake. We always clean up our ordinance language, and I think we're trying to start to do that. I think Alderman Kahnman was trying to clean up some of the language of the ordinance, and the debate was shut off, and the mayor entertained the motion to end debate. I think that was a mistake for the mayor. He should have allowed the aldermen to have their chance to talk about this further. I think it was a mistake that, and I think Jay Wavering agrees with this, if the city is, let's assume that we have a joint purchasing agreement based in Minnesota. That's a locked-in-place agreement that itself is competitively bid. Now, let's assume that we had the authority under our city code to go under that Minnesota joint purchasing agreement. Well, if that's the case, we do not have the authority to start rewriting that contract. And that's what, and I think this is an honest mistake by our budget director, who I genuinely respect, but, you know, we're all capable of making mistakes, but that was a mistake. We don't have the authority to renegotiate the master contract. And I think corporation counsel, you agree with that, and you so advised, Mr., or Mr. Wavering agreed with that and took that position, that if he's going to write a letter, which was part of the packet, as Frank, as Alderman Edwards said, that says, this NAPA agreement is exempt from competitive sealed bidding because it's a joint purchasing agreement, then we're stuck with the joint purchasing agreement as far as pricing is concerned. And we started renegotiating the pricing. So that's a mistake. I think it was a mistake, and I understand corporation counsel, that you're the leader of a staff of attorneys and administrators, but when an ordinance comes to you, you have to sign it, legal sufficiency or not. I think, you know, when you put, when you sign it and you say it's legally sufficient, we're banking on that, and we're relying on that. And I think, looking back on it, I bet you wish you could have personally looked into that contract in greater detail to make sure that all the staff work was done. So there's a series of mistakes here, and I think the mayor's doing the right thing by asking the council to look at this again. The, we do have some gentlemen here. It's just by coincidence that the area vice president for O'Reilly's Automotive Parts is here tonight, and I believe he was here for another reason, but when this got in the news that Mayor Houston is opening the door to some extent to a rebidding process, they wish to speak to the council tonight, Chair. So we would like that, them to have that opportunity to talk about, that they would like to see this rebid. There's also a gentleman from Springfield Clutch. I don't know, he thought he'd get his chance at around 6:30. I don't know if he's here in the chambers or not. I wouldn't recognize him if he is here. Then there's also a letter that Mr. Wally Mechtold requested that be read into the record. He's with Stonewheel Inc. at 1901 East Adams, and he's part of a chain of 17 stores throughout Illinois. They do about $60 million worth of gross sales per year. They're a parts supplier, and he wished this letter to be read into the record, Mr. Chair. So it's very brief. So it's very brief.
Mr. Chair?
Can we do that at the end of discussion, please?
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
I don't know that it's wise or good public policy if we're going to vote on, this body's going to vote to put this out for bid or follow our process, to have individuals speak here. This is not the form, I don't believe. They're not swaying us. They're going to put their information in a proposal and present it for review. They're not going to sway us.
Right, but this is, this is old business, and these are people that have signed up to speak at the end of the committee, is what he's referencing to.
Yeah, but he's indicating that these people want to speak and talk to us about why we should put this out for bid, and that we don't need to, we don't need to know that.
Yeah, well, I'm going to allow it at the end of our discussion.
Okay.
So in summary, I agree with others here that have said we should start over and put this out for rebid.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Turner?
I guess my comments were more in line with Alderman Griffin. I think that when we voted on this contract, we were under the, under the impression that we were voting on it based on the joint purchasing agreement, which is legal and appropriate to do. So at the point where we took that vote, none of us, we were not out of line in taking that vote. There was nothing wrong with taking that vote. The problem occurred when we found out that we were not operating under the joint purchasing agreement. So I think we all need to separate that out and not get us confused that all of us made some huge out-of-order error when we made that vote, because we were not. We were under the impression that we were, had options on how we approached it. We chose the option that it was under the joint purchasing agreement. Now, again, the problem and the concern that everyone has was when we found out that that purchasing agreement was not necessarily in place. So I think that that's where the huge concern needs to be, that we need to be able to rely on the information that we get from staff, and because that's what we base a lot of the decisions that we make on, is the information that we get from staff. So we have to be able to rely on that information, and we have to be able to have assurances that staff is appropriately vetting all of that information before they bring it, bring it back, bring it back to us. Now, whether there's a decision made to, you know, reopen the bid, or however we decide to move on that, I do think that we have to separate those two things out and not leave the impression that we made this huge error when we voted on it. And unfortunately, as I've been listening to news reports, what I've been reading in the newspaper, and the little snippets and things that I've been hearing from talk radio, the perception, and as Alderman Simpson said, perception is, you know, everybody's reality. There's a perception out there that we all made some huge mistake in voting on it, and so I just think that that needs to be cleared up. If, in fact, we had the authority to piggyback on this joint purchasing agreement, we wouldn't even be talking about this right now. So the reason why we're talking about it now is because of the error that was made in leading us to believe that we had the authority to operate under that joint purchasing agreement.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Alderman Edwards?
Calm down.
You're in. Okay, then. Alderman Cannon?
Well, just, I almost never disagree with Alderman Griffin, but I would respectfully suggest that it isn't that we're now changing our mind and saying we should have competitive bidding. It's, as Alderman Turner said, we thought we were, and others, that we were doing, taking this vote pursuant to the city purchasing code, but then we found out that wasn't the case, and we're doing it as an exception. And that's, I think, that's the problem that I think most aldermen have, and, you know, that we should have done it through either, through one of the methods that is prescribed in the city purchasing code.
Alderman Griffin?
I agree with that statement 100%. That was my point. That's the fight. That's the argument tonight. I agree with that 100%. We didn't follow one of them, and we need to do so. Back up, but I'm saying, it seemed like the fight was starting to change tonight of what we were arguing about, and that's why we want to make sure we're back on track. That's the problem. We did not follow one of the three. We were under the impression we were, but now we found out by an error that we're not. And you're right, that's what we need to do, is get back, fix it, bid it on, go on one of these three that is legitimate, and be done.
And also, I'd like to also interject that, yeah, I think, and it also opens up different questions and different ideas about what may have been wrong or what we might have been able to do as we go through it. So, yeah, I agree with you, Tim, on that, that I think everybody looked at the joint purchasing, and the information wasn't clear, was wrong, so it kind of got everybody off track. I do want to commend the mayor for his leadership to bring this back to point so that we're able to discuss it and come to a general consensus here on the council.
So, Chairman?
Yes.
So I made this as a question to ask to Alderman Edwards and Alderman McMenamin. Are you going to be proposing a new, what's the, where we, I mean, because we could, I mean, I think the consensus is that we're, thereby wants to rebid and put this back out.
Once we get an answer.
Once we get an answer from the FOIA. So are we going to be expecting an ordinance?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that was the draft of what we've heard from the mayor.
Yes.
That he would be putting forth a resolution that says, this is an option, this is an option, and kind of take some leadership on, do you want to void the contract and go off an RFP? Or do we want to, and Mayor, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm just kind of paraphrasing your letter, or we realize that everyone's a mistake, and we're going to move forward. So is that...
Mayor, would you like to speak on this?
I mean, without that, then one of us will have to do it, but I think the mayor has offered it.
I think it's fairly clear, we have one of two choices. We can either reaffirm what we have done, or give an indication, and we'll go ahead and cancel the contract, and then go through the bidding process. But again, one of the things we're going to be looking at is that, under the contract, which is legally binding, we have a 90-day cancellation clause, so that if we give them notice, it's going to take 90 days to be able to cancel the contract, and then we'll go through the bidding process.
So Mayor, how long of a process will we be talking about if we cancel the contract and then rebid?
It's going to be the normal bidding process. Then we'd just have to start it and start from scratch.
Then, if I may?
Yes.
Let's assume that we did cancel the contract, they had 90 days, well, they'd have 90 days, they'd still have the contract.
We have a 90-day, we have to give them a 90-day notice.
Right, so they'd still be in process for 90 days. So then, if we start the bidding process and it takes longer than 90 days to get somebody new in place, then we got a gap. So I guess, you know, I don't know, maybe NAPA would agree to cover that gap, or maybe they wouldn't. I don't know.
Well, first of all, one of the things we have to do in order to be able to centralize the garage is we have to have parts. And part of this was setting up a part room in the garage that would be staffed by NAPA. So that in terms of doing that, what we're talking about is taking a delay in getting the garage set up. So that there is a cost involved in terms of the projected savings that we had anticipated because of the additional delay we're going to have in order to be able to have a part set up.
Well, in the interim, is NAPA taking steps, concrete steps, to get their parts over to the garage and so we can...
No, because if they do that, then we're going to buy those parts.
Mayor? Are we, are we, are we set up, though, to handle this as far as all of our public works and everything? There's not going to be a...
Well, again, what we were gearing ourselves for is to be able to centralize this. One of the things that we have done in each of the garages is where we've had vacancies and that type of thing. We haven't filled them, so we were going to bring everybody together. So we are straining ourselves.
Okay, I think what the public is concerned about is that are we covered if we go into this and it takes longer to do? But as a city, we still are covered as far as personnel and departments. Mayor Wheaton?
Director McCarthy? I could probably answer that. We have been in the process of doing the consolidation, and during the process of this consolidation, over the last year, we've had several attritions from various departments. We had one gentleman who unfortunately passed away in a parts department. We didn't refill that position because we knew the consolidation was coming. We've had several departments, and Director Mahoney can speak up for his, because he's a great example where there's been some attrition. We have not backfilled, and he is strained in his department. They are outsourcing more and more because they simply don't have the manpower right now to handle the workload that's there. And we're seeing that. We've got a fireman, fire mechanic who is retiring this Friday. Again, that will put the fire department a man down. We are in the process of collectively bargaining impact agreements with the various organizations. That's going very, very well. We have one agreement already, and we've got one we're going to be bringing to the council here pretty shortly with ASME. So, and we had a good discussion with the fire union today, so that is in the process. We are not doing any personnel movement, hiring, promotions, anything in the current existing operation. That will all be taken care of after the consolidation. So to answer your question, can we cope? If coping is struggling, yes, we can do that. And again, I don't want to speak for the departments. Director Mahoney would be a great example to talk to because he's been underwater for quite some time.
Well, that's what I want to assure the public, that as far as public safety, as far as public works, that we are covered and their safety is covered.
We still have personnel that are working on vehicles, and, you know, it's more difficult than they wish it to be, but yes, we're not, we're not having trucks that are sidelined for too terribly long, as far as I know.
Thank you. That answers my question.
And if I want to add one thing I wanted to address, I think it was Alderman Cannon, you asked about the parts operation. That was in process. We've already taken NAPA around to the various parts operations that we have, all four of them. They have talked to personnel there, they have looked through inventory, they have started that process of trying to figure out what they need to purchase and get in inventory. They had started the process of ordering everything that's needed in order to build the parts room. All of that's on hold now, pending the outcome of this.
Okay, so they haven't put any physical parts in the consolidated garage building?
No, no. They just started the process of getting ready for that so that we could implement the consolidation this summer.
So is the plan that the separate garages will continue to operate separately until you have the parts department established in the new consolidated garage building, then you'll bring the...
Yes, the plan is to continue to operate as we always have with the four separate garages until the consolidation is ready. And in order to get the consolidation ready, there's really three things that need to be done. The building needs to be completed now. The majority of the work is getting ready to wrap up. There's a few more things we need to do with some office renovations and break rooms and that type of stuff. A little bit more work out on the, on the maintenance floor. We have to finish the impact negotiations with the unions, which are going very, very well, and I think we're getting close on that. Fairly confident we're close on that. And then we have to have the parts set up. We can't do anything in that building until the parts room is set up.
Okay.
And in order to get the parts room set up, the first thing we have to do, I mean, they can, they can do things concurrently, but one of the major things that has to be done is you have to build the parts room, and they can't build the parts room. It's about a six-to-eight week lead time just on getting the components needed to build the parts room. Then you need a couple of weeks to build it. Then you need three, four weeks in order to put the inventory in there, get the computers set up, doing all that, so...
Thank you, Director. I think we're getting off topic here. I'd like to get back to Cory Job's question. Alderman, was your question answered?
Yes, I guess, I have no, you know, I apologize, I didn't get the mayor's, I didn't have an opportunity. So corporation counsel, I mean, I didn't realize he was going to ask to reaffirm the recommendation. My only, I have no issue with that. My fear is, I agree with the mayor, the longer we, I mean, everybody's admitting a mistake occurred. So the longer we're prolonging this, the longer the cost savings we're going to see. So I guess my concern that I may be dealing with is if we put this back out for bid and NAPA, maybe NAPA's price was attracted because of this, this buying, this purchase power, buying, you know, multiple states and et cetera, will their price be as competitive on their own? That, that should be a concern. And so this could be a longer process, and if NAPA's been out there looking at our sites already, I'm not certain if there's enough support to reaffirm that vote or not, but those are a lot of questions I have and concerns with this.
And again, there's a, there is a cost savings that we are giving up. The longer we put it off, the less, more it's costing us to operate. And that is one of the reasons that I recommended that we reaffirm the contract.
Alderman Edwards?
Is there, I guess this is a legal question. When we do something that's not quite in the realm of the way we're supposed to do something and pick, pick one of the three, and we didn't pick one of the three, and somebody's sitting out there and they're wanting to bid on that, and they weren't given the fair opportunity to bid on that, and they say, "Look, this is your rules. You didn't go by those rules." That's a simple mistake. There are a lot of simple mistakes that are over there in that courtroom over on Knight Street because somebody didn't get a fair play. So when we talk about money, that may be sitting out there, too, that we're not aware of, because we are in the public sector, and under our guise, we have ordinance to allow everybody a free opportunity, or an opportunity to play in the sandbox with these rules. And when we don't go by these rules, somebody can take that and go, "I didn't get a fair shake," and go to a judge and say, "What do you think, Mr. Judge? They just went and did whatever they wanted to do." And so we got to be careful when we say that we're just doing this and look at the money that we may or may not get or save. And so I get that, and I understand that. But that's why in the public sector, we have rules that we have to play by so that everybody gets a fair shake.
And, you know, again, I sent a memo to the council on April 17th, and in the last part of it, I addressed the, you know, the due process clauses and the equal protection clauses of the Illinois and the federal constitutions. The bottom line is that no person has a vested right under the due process clause in the mere continuance of a law. Now, I'm not arguing that as a matter of policy, you know, we should be cavalier and be casting aside those laws, but, but a legislative body always has an ongoing right to amend the way it proceeds any time, as long as before, you know, when it makes that change, there haven't been the vested rights of any other parties intervening. That's why we can't simply just throw away the NAPA contract, because NAPA now has a vested right in the enforcement of that contract. But prior to us deciding who would get an auto parts contract, nobody had a vested right in any particular procedure to be followed by the city. The city's responsibility is to its citizens, not to people who might want a city contract. And, you know, I don't want to argue too much because I understand that it's very powerful, wanting to make sure that everybody's treated fairly and according to what they thought were the rules at the time. But there is no liability to the city from third parties because we chose to award a contract to NAPA by ordinance, because as I've said several times, legally, the last ordinance in time is what controls. And the policy issues are obviously up to this body. But as far as the legal issue, as far as legal liability, the liability is only to us if we, if we don't go through the procedures now to cancel a binding contract, which is going to take 90 days.
I think everybody understands about the legal ramifications, and I think probably they're looking at the ethical viewpoint of it also. Alderman Edwards?
No, I'm ready to move on.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. The mayor or Director McCarthy, I understand what you're saying about the more this is delayed, it puts off the cost savings, but is it correct that we don't incur, the city won't incur any cost to NAPA until the, their parts department is set up in the consolidated garage and they actually start dispensing parts? And basically, that wouldn't happen if we decide to put this off and give them a 90-day notice?
We would not anticipate that there would be any cost that we would incur with NAPA. They're aware of the situation that we have. NAPA. They're aware of the situation that we have today. That doesn't mean that we will not lose cost savings by not consolidating the garage, which can be substantial dollars over a period of time.
Thank you. All right, Alderman McMinema?
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification. The 90-days cancellation is 90 days unless NAPA would agree to waive the 90 days and move forward more expeditiously. If the city and NAPA would agree mutually to waive the 90 days, then there's a shortened period to begin the rebid process. And Mr. Chair, I just want to, again, the folks from O'Reilly would like a chance, and I'd like to read this letter into the record when you're ready.
Yes, Chair. Any more questions from the circle or from the mayor? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the questions. Alderman McMinema, I'll let you read the letter first. Again, this is from Mr. Wally Mectold of Stonewill Inc.
at 1901 East Adams. Dear Springfield City Council members, with respect to the NAPA contract the city entered into, I urge the city to consider engaging in an open and fair procurement process, which would give vendors that have had businesses in Springfield and have served the Springfield community a chance to win the city's business. He goes on to state, "A full procurement process would be competitive and hopefully result in the city contracting with a vendor that can meet the same specifications for less money than the original contract." He goes on to say, "In addition, as saving the city money, the goal should be a transparent process. Thank you for considering my input. My apologies. I was not able to attend the meeting in person. Wally Mectold, Stonewill Inc." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And do we have a representative from O'Reilly Auto Parts here? Please state your name and address for us.
Good evening. I'm Ken Hubbard, Regional Director for O'Reilly Auto Parts, 3314 Village Green, Ford in Mill State, Illinois. My office out of St. Louis. I apologize for not having a prepared statement. Wasn't aware that I was going to be here tonight till I got in town a couple hours ago. Sitting here listening to the council, if I could, I'd like to make a couple of points. We have had a longstanding relationship with the city as a purveyor or supplier of auto parts. As of today, we are still doing that. We took an order just this morning for one of your shops. I was listening to the mayor and I understand the concern for the cost savings. There's a more than likely chance that the parts that you are currently buying through us at O'Reilly Auto Parts may very well be cheaper than what you were going to pay for them through NAPA. The pricing structure with an integrated system is different than the buying group that you're currently purchasing through. I'm not going to swear to that, of course, but without allowing us to at least have the opportunity to bid on this contract, there was, we don't have, you don't have no way of knowing. I'm sure that you've seen NAPA's pricing. You have not seen ours. Now, our integrated system's a little bit different, of course, and I won't go into the selling points of that here. But if the council was willing to reconsider this NAPA contract and give us the opportunity to bid on that, which I think would make good common business sense, you might be surprised at how competitive we actually are. I'd also like to point out that, you know, we are the largest auto parts supplier in Springfield. We have the largest inventory, the most trucks. There isn't any reason that we can't service you if the council sees fit to award us that contract. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just asking you the opportunity to present ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next, is there someone here from Springfield Clutch? Anyone else who would like to address the committee about the NAPA contract? All right, we'll close out any other old business by any, here, we'll close that out. Alderman Simpson?
You know, I guess we can do it at the end because there is an email that many of us received with regard to the consolidation. So, is it appropriate now or later?
We can do it at the end.
At the end, okay.
Okay. All right. Ordnances tabled are remaining in committee. 2012-123, 2012-376, 2013-174, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2014-022, 2014-024, 2014-085, 2014-114. That's it for those. Alderman Griffin.
Okay. We had a talk last week about 2014-022 will come out next week. Do we want to just wait and bring it out at the meeting? Or do we want to put it on debate this evening? That way, everyone knows. We've still got another week and make any arrangements or things that they need to do. So, I'll make a motion to...
And I'll second it.
...put it on debate. Okay.
Chair, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't see 022. Where is that?
That's the remat.
It's the math.
Okay, thank you. I just, if I may, Mr. Chair, just like we asked that, you know, if anybody has any further amendments, if they could please get them to the other council members as quickly as possible so you don't get sprung with something at the last minute because if there's any change, I have, a number of constituents are very concerned about the lines. And I'd like to obviously have the opportunity to discuss any proposed changes with them. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the ordinances for committee consideration?
Mr. Alderman?
Yes.
Staff would ask that 2014-114 be just removed. We have a substitute ordinance that we put on first reading last week.
Okay.
And so, that can be removed and we don't need to consider 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that that ordinance be removed from our agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right.
2014-183 is a resolution for participation in the State of Illinois Federal Surplus Property Program.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a move for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-184 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for Miss Kimmy's LLC doing business as Miss Kimmy's located at 1424 Sagamon Avenue.
Move for consent. Second.
We have a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. So, is this going to be one of these video gaming parlors? Is that what, okay. Is that, that was a yes I got from Alderman Edwards?
Well, it's one of the ones.
Well, is Todd Oliver?
It is. Sam.
Sam, it is.
It's one of the ones that we moved the deadline for because they'd already done everything.
Okay, so we're, okay, yeah. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We have one nay. Thank you.
2014-185 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for Miss Kimmy's LLC doing business as Miss Kimmy's located at 1052 North Grand Avenue West.
Move for consent. Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. We have one nay. Thank you.
2014-186 is an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing execution of contract UE 150302, heavy equipment maintenance and repairs at Dahlman with Martin Equipment of Illinois Incorporated, and an amount not to exceed $275,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a movement for debate and a second. Questions? No questions? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-187 is an ordinance accepting a letter offer for extension, approving a two-year contract extension, and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $108,330 under contract number UE 120320, mercury sampling with Frontier Global Sciences Incorporated, for a total amount payable of $271,025.52 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-188 is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal number 2251180 and additional funding in an amount not to exceed $22,550 with Stress Engineering Services Incorporated for high-energy pipe inspection and flow-accelerated corrosion testing at Dahlman Unit 33 for a total amount payable of $180,175 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a move for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-189 is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the D.A. Lubricants Company Incorporated, previously approved pursuant to Chapter 38.35 for contracts under $100,000, and authorizing an additional payment of $35,100 for a total not to exceed $135,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-190 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with and payment in an amount not to exceed $220,000 to Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for preliminary engineering and construction engineering services for the 2014 sewer lining program in an amount not to exceed $220,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-191 is an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Martin Engineering Company for professional services related to the Northeast area sanitary sewer study in an amount not to exceed $53,038 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman?
Is this the first study for that area?
This is, the Northeast Sewer Study is a bigger study of that area. This is a portion of that, doing some of the manhole rating to start that process. There's actually a couple of engineering firms going to be meeting on that. We'll be discussing it further because the study's going to go on for some time. And it's a result of the E.P. Administrative Order that we're under. And this is an area where there's overflows, so we have to study that area and make some adjustments eventually.
So, there are no old studies out there?
No, not, not, not at this level.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, if I may, Director. Is this being funded through the bonds that were sold through as a result of a half a percent increase in the income tax? This...
It'll be funded through the sewer, the sewer fund, correct, yes. But this is really, ultimately, what this will probably lead to is projects that will be funded through the sewer bonds if we go out for bonds. Once we do that study, there's likely projects...
These are, these are storm sewers?
These are sanitary sewers.
These are sanitary sewers. Okay, so this is the, what's from the increase in the sewer fee that the council passed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Director. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-192 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for reconstruction and construction of the Fayette Avenue Bridge over the Jacksonville branch for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-193 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Cumming Engineering Corporation for the construction engineering services for the Fayette Avenue Bridge over the Jacksonville branch in an amount not to exceed $142,444.78 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-194 is a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $320,500 may be used for the Fayette Avenue Bridge reconstruction project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-195 is an ordinance authorizing additional payment of $123,840.34 to the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for a total amount not to exceed $657,840.34 for the reconstruction of Isles Avenue from Cokie Mill Road to Metta Burke Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-196 is a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $657,840.34 may be used for the reconstruction of Isles Avenue from Cokie Mill Road to Metta Burke Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to, I'm sorry?
We have a movement for consent and a second.
Sorry, the current motion is consent.
Did somebody motion?
Yes, we have a movement and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-197 is an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.156A pertaining to the right-of-way streets for Wabash Center located north of Wabash Avenue and west of Archer Elevator Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-198 is an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.157L pertaining to the restriction of access for Wabash Center located north of Wabash Avenue and west of Archer Elevator Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion for consent and a second. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-199 is an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of Wabash Center located north of Wabash Avenue and west of Archer Elevator Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-200 is an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.158B2 pertaining to lot arrangement at Wabash Place, Wabash Market, Place 2 subdivision located at the southeast corner of Wabash Avenue and Drawbridge Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for approval on consent. Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-201 is an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of Wabash Place, Wabash Market Place 2 subdivision located at the southeast corner of Wabash Avenue and Drawbridge Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for approval on consent.
We have a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-202 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with Lee V. Shirok for the property located at 2506 Plateau Drive.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-203 is an ordinance annexing certain described property to the city of Springfield owned by Lee V. Shirok located at 2506 Plateau Drive.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-204 is an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 4375 Peoria Road.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
2014-205 is an ordinance vacating the alleys in blocks 5, 6, and 8 of Hickox and Chestnut's addition, Madison Street between 17th Street and 19th Street, 17th Street between the north line of Madison Street and Clear Lake Avenue, and Jefferson Street between Clear Lake Avenue and 19th Street to the city of Springfield to facilitate the construction of a new storage facility and bioswale for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Griffin?
Could somebody tell me, in terms, I understand exactly what a bioswale does?
This regarding the grant we got to create the bioswale, the area around the storage area, we're going to build the storage facility for our material, basically. What it is, it's the garage facility, the alleys and the streets that went through there one time were never vacant. And they haven't been streets for decades. So, this is cleaning that up before we do... that up before we do that work. This is the proper way to do it.
No, I just want to know what a bioswale is.
It's a burn.
It's a burn.
It's a burn, a mermite.
Okay.
It filters the pollutants and...
Okay. I'm good.
Thank you, Director. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, thank you.
2014-206 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for J.I.M.V. Incorporated doing business as Gas Depot located at 1028 North Knight Street.
Move for consent?
Second.
We have a movement for consent and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it? Or, did you say nay?
I did.
We have one nay, thank you.
2014-207 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Livingstone, Mueller, O'Brien, and Davenon P.C. to defend workers' compensation claims for the city of Springfield from March 1st, 2014 through February 28th, 2015, for a total amount not to exceed $125,000.
Move to debate?
Second.
We have a motion for debate and a second, any discussion? Alderman Griffin.
Just a quick clarification, Corporation Council, this is the one that is replacing what we originally had.
That's correct.
It's not like we just figured out and made it, this ended three months ago. We just, it got put off, and so we'll fix it.
That's correct.
Any other, any other questions?
Why did we, yeah, why did we, we, why was the other original ordinance not good and, what was it?
Right now, we're, it included the name of another law firm, and we're actively reconsidering which other law firm we may use.
I see. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, thank you. All right, we move on to unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, is there a formal vote taken on 114 that's pulled out? May I?
Yes, sir. What, 157?
For the, it was on debate.
114 was withdrawn.
The original 114 was withdrawn, yeah.
Oh, I thought 157 is what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I saw, I was like...
See?
157.
Doug, you led me astray.
157.
Yeah. 22 went to debate.
0222 went to debate, now it was withdrawn. That answer your question, Joe? Okay. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. Chair, we received an email from Harry E. Buck, and he raises some interesting questions with regard to the new facility, and I think he's well within his rights to raise them. I'd like the copy to be presented to Director McCarty, and I would hope that there be no negative repercussions against Mr. Buck for asking these questions, and if we could maybe get some answers, would be appreciated.
I would see Mr. McCarty gets that email, Mr. Buck would strike me and have to give it to the council, and that's what I'd do.
Thank you.
All right, then, Director, you'll see that you'll get it back to Joe so he can get the answers to us. Any other new bit, or unfinished business?
Yeah.
Alderman Tyler.
This is a question for CWLP. I know you guys have got, I'm assuming that Nelson's is out there working on behalf of CWLP because they're cutting down things in the power lines.
Mm-hmm.
I guess the thing which I just want to ask, because I'm getting a lot of questions from the neighborhoods where they're working right now, the homeowners are questioning whether Nelson's is just removing the branches that are an issue, or if they're actually paying attention to the integrity of the tree, and if they're, you know, are they caught, are they causing future problems because they're taking a chunk out of the middle of the tree and leaving the rest of it going around the lines? I guess is the big question. They're really concerned about the shaping. I informed them that as far as I, as far as I knew, they were not going to create a situation where the power lines were going to be in any further danger.
Yeah, Nelson guys are very much trained on how to trim the trees. They, I mean, different types of trees, you trim it different ways, because if you trim it wrong, it actually can encourage new growth and faster growth. And also, you know, I know what happens a lot of times is a tree splits and they take off one half and it looks lopsided.
Yes.
Well, that side of the tree's structural integrity is based on that one leg of that branch, so that hasn't changed. That, that other half of the tree has the same integrity as it did before on the other part. Unless the whole root ball comes out of the ground, that branch is still the same. So they do look at all of that, and if there's times where, you know, they can take the entire tree down or something, you know, they will possibly consider that, but as they go through and trim, they look at the tree and make sure it's still a viable tree and remove what's in the right-of-way, and what we're trying to do is remove enough so that we don't have to be back in five years.
Well, and I explained to them that, you know, a lot of these power outages that we've experienced have been tree branches.
Almost all of them.
And that in order to increase the efficiency and cut down on the power outages, we need the tree trimming done. I just wanted to make sure that that was the way that you guys are going with this.
Yes, I mean, we have got a goal to make sure that we're getting around to all of the backbone circuits once every five years to do that. Historically, we have not been doing that, and that is a mission we have currently. And once we get onto that program, the removal in the future times will be less. I mean, what a lot of times bothers people is they come home, there's a stark difference in the way the tree looks. Once you drive by it for a couple of weeks, you don't notice the drastic change. I'm not saying it's a pretty tree by any means, because the way they have to cut it from power lines is sometimes very, you know, unsightly, but the removal in the future will be less once we get to that point. But, yeah, we're removing it to, I mean, it's the number one thing we can do to increase electric reliability for our consumers.
Alderman Griffin.
Erica, Joe had already taken pensions, so the tree trimming stuff's been my, my deal. Are we still talking about, we were talking about one time about possibly when we're going to a certain area and doing that, that we were going to approach the people whose property's trees were on where, hey, is it okay if we just take the whole thing down? Are we still talking about doing that?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, when the trucks there and the saws are going, it's much more cost-efficient to go ahead and address it at that point.
Yeah, and that is a program that we still try to do. I mean, a lot, there's a lot of people that don't want us to do that. There's some people that want us, you know, where we only got to trim a couple of foot off a tree, they want us to go into their yard and take the whole tree out, and so there's always a balancing part. But trees that are in our right-of-way that they're happy to take down, yeah, we will pursue that. Some of the areas, we've got so much circuit to clean, clean out, and we'd have to take down 20 trees because everybody wants them out. We really don't have time to do that, but as we come back around next year, we're going to look at trying to take more and more trees down.
Right. And look into possibly finding some shorter decorative-type ornamental trees that we can replace that, so they, we still want some trees.
Trees that they plant, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Sam.
Thank you. A couple, a few weeks ago, a couple of citizens came here at the end of our council meeting to address the council, to urge our community to participate in the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure, to raise money for breast cancer research, and I just wanted to remind everyone, especially runners like Alderman Edwards, that that race is this Friday at 6:00 PM, over at Second, and it starts at Second and Capitol at the convergence of Ward Six and Ward Five. So, and I think it'll be a great race, so I'm just reminding everyone about that. Thank you all, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else for unfinished business? Point of clarification for Corporation Council. A question for me. It's eight votes to call the question when you're in council, correct?
When in a city council meeting?
Yeah, when in city council.
Oh, I see, to cutoff debate?
Yeah.
That's correct. Under our rules of procedure, and this surprised me when I found it, because it, but under our rules of procedure, we do count the mayor. So as mentioned, it's a motion to call the question, which is also the same as a motion to cutoff debate, that requires a second to the motion, and then it requires that it pass by a two-thirds majority, and in this case, it's two-thirds of 11, so it's eight votes.
Okay. Is, what about in committee?
Yeah, and my assumption is that's the same, but I'll have to double check on that.
Okay.
I believe the mayor's count even when he's not here.
Okay, thank you.
I think Alderman McMinnan, when he was talking about it, he said two-thirds of those present. Is it two-thirds of those present, or two-thirds of 11? In other words, if there's only seven council members, or what I mean? I believe, I don't believe there's any exceptions on, I think it is eight votes.
Eight votes regardless of the number of present.
Yes, because, well, for one thing, obviously, the mayor might, in committees of the whole, he might be in the audience, but he's not participating. But I'm just talking about at council meetings. It's a hard eight votes regardless of the number of members of the council who are present at the council meeting. There's several times in our rules of procedure where we say two-thirds majority, and then we put in parentheses, eight votes.
And that's this case?
Yes.
This situation? All right, thanks. Can you also find out on the committee and then let us?
Yes, I will look at that.
Okay, thank you. Any other unfinished business?
I can probably answer that.
Okay.
The original code was written back in '87, we had five standing committees at that time, so there'd never be any reference to that when it comes about committee of the whole.
Okay.
So I would assume it would stay the same, eight votes no matter what.
Eight votes no matter what. Okay, thank you, Joe. We appreciate it. Any new business? We have one citizen signed up, is Eric Welch here.
Good evening.
Please state your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Eric Welch. I live at 950, 950 South Lincoln Avenue, Springfield, 62704.
Thank you.
My mother's maiden name is Winkelman, and she's from Martinsville. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak this evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to come down and do my annual review and preview of the SoHo Music Fest, which is coming up here in just a few short weeks. I just wanted to come down and talk to you guys about some of the new things that we have going on this year. We've really been working hard. Our directors and committee members and coordinators have all been really, like, struggling to come up with some new developments. One of the very interesting things, well, two new aspects of SoHo are that we've added a 10K race, which is going on out of the Singham and Valley Trail. Registrations are coming in pretty fast for that, so we're excited to include that. And also, we have a disc golf tournament. I'm not sure if you're familiar with...
Frisbee golf?
Frisbee golf, there you go, yeah. I'm a player, I enjoy doing it. Frank, it might be something you might enjoy.
Yeah, I play.
Have you played, yeah? All right, yeah. And this is a PDGA sanctioned event, so that's a national deal for people that are into it. There's not a huge crowd of people that are really into it, but Springfield with four courses is pretty substantial on the mark, and to coordinate that along with the music festival, from the people that are helping to organize it, and have told me that one of the big things to draw a larger tournament like this, it's a tiered event that leads to nationals, is to have an after-party. So when they approached me about it, I was like, yeah, let's, you know, let's increase the impact that SoHo has on Springfield, more than just having a street party downtown, promoting local artists and music that we have, you know, been doing for 10 years. This is our 10th anniversary, if you're not aware with, we would be going into fourth grade. You know, how's my hair, by the way? I know I'm not telling you.
Beautiful.
I noticed Cory left, we can't have two guys with great hair. Anyway, I just wanted to invite you all again to come down. We're also attempting to break a world record for world's largest rock band, so it's a performing band. Registrations are a little slow on that, so we may back that off to a 100-man band, which would still be good. We're getting close to that, and that's going to be Saturday afternoon. We have, obviously, Saturday afternoon, we have family events going on, Big Giant Blow Slide, Mini Oburn Crisis Nursery, one of our 10 charities this year. They've been our primary charity in years past, I'm sure you're familiar with that. If not, they are one of our 10 charities along with several others, Share the Spirit Foundation, Cochlear Implant Awareness Foundation, Gen H Kids, The Matthew Project, Kummer Outreach Ministries, Downtown Springfield Incorporated, Boys and Girls Club, shoot, I'm forgetting somebody. Oh, did I say Matthew Project? Oh, St. Patrick's School. I'm sorry. I don't know what number I'm on. I, I'm sure I forgot somebody, and I'm, oh, Phoenix Center. The Phoenix Center is also one of our charities, and we're going to be down at their Pride Fest, which is going on also this weekend. There's a lot going on with the races, and there's another race that we're going to be going out and tagging at Lake Memorial Park to try to recruit runners for our 10K. Anyway, I know my time is limited, again, thank you for having me. I've got some free passes that I'd like to hand out to you guys before I go. Again, please come down, check it out, you know, and, yes, please.
About the band? Can you just bring an instrument?